Good evening and welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13. Special call meeting on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017. Like to call the meeting in order if you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, welcome. And our first item on the agenda tonight will be the swearing in of newly elected board members. And the acting school board vice chair will administer the oath of office to the newly elected board members. And we're going to join Natty over by the screen. Lauren, if you want to bring your sheet.
It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board member, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. If you can please recite after me. Having signed the acceptance of oath of office and oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office.
I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of Independent School District Number 13 to the best of my judgment and ability.
I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of the Independent School District Number 13 to the best of my judgment and ability. That's my high five.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. The board will be asked to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. I would need a motion and a second on that.
So moved.
Laura, and then we'll give that one to Lauren. You can get something else. Ah, discussion. Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up is the organization of the board. The school board chair will open nominations for board offices. Any board member may be nominated for any office. A nomination does not require a second. And each office is voted on separately. I have kind of a cheat sheet that I'm going to use, so I'll ask for nominations. And when there's a nomination, I will ask again, and I'll ask a total of three times. So, it sounds like I'm repeating myself. It's because I am. Let me find that note. Okay, so, we will start in with, the first item is for nominations are now in order for the office of the chair. Looking for nominations for the chair.
I would nominate. Go ahead.
Sorry.
Don't be.
Larkin.
Okay, nomination for John Larkin is nominated. Are there any other nominations for office of the chair? Are there any further nominations for office of the chair? Are there any further nominations for the office of the chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of the chair are closed. So, then we would need to vote on that, or do we need to vote on that at first?
Can I move to unanimously consent?
Laura's making a motion to unanimously consent?
Yeah, just do the unanimous consent.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Do they need a second for that? Should be.
I'll second.
I don't think we need a second. I think we're fine.
We should vote then on top of that, or say all in favor? Yes? Josh is our parliamentarian from MSBA, just in case you're wondering why I keep looking at him. And I will several times tonight. There's a motion for unanimous, what was it called? Consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next will be nominations are now in order for office of the vice chair.
Natty's about three second delay.
Oh, okay. About three seconds?
Yeah.
So, we're now looking for nominations for the office of vice chair.
I would nominate Member Palmer.
Member Palmer is nominated. Are there any other nominations for office of the vice chair? Are there any further nominations for the office of vice chair? Are there any further nominations for the office of vice chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of vice chair are closed. And I would make a motion for unanimous consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. We are now, sorry. You doing okay over there, Natty? Following okay? All right, okay.
Is John doing okay?
Don, you okay hanging in there? Oh, for the, does there need to be? Just kind of a white ballad, right? Or, it's like a white ballad, right? Okay. Okay. All right. Nominations are now in order for the office of school board clerk. Need to pause for a second. For those of you that are new, understanding the roles of the clerk, Superintendent Kell, if you want to just touch on that, just briefly. I think sometimes clerk and treasurer makes people nervous when they hear that. And I think that if they have a good understanding of what the role actually ends up being.
I would be happy to, Chair Larkin. There's a sheet at your table that has the school board policy 202 that explains what each of these do. The clerk is a formal title, but a designee will also be helping in this position, the same as treasurer. So, if you're thinking of either one, usually the designee for the treasurer rests in the office of finance and operations. And the designee for the clerk rests in the superintendent's office with Don Hoyam. And so, I would say there's a lot of signing after meetings with the clerk. And with the treasurer, there will be some things like bank statements and things that you would have to sign off on. And they're also on the checks, is that not correct, Bill? So, but if you just briefly look over, it's not an untoward responsibility, but it is one to, you know, to review things from that perspective, either as clerk or treasurer.
Thank you. Okay, with that said, nominations are now in order for the office of school board clerk.
I would nominate Member Severson. It's going to be weird for tonight.
I don't see her declining. Member Severson is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the office of clerk?
Do you need a second?
Not yet. We'll second the unanimous consent this time, though. Are there any further nominations for the office of clerk? Are there any further nominations for the office of clerk? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of clerk are closed. You want to motion the?
I'd like to move that we vote by unanimous consent.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Motion by Laura, second by Holla. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next, nominations are now in order for the office of school board treasurer.
I'd like to nominate myself.
Hollow Samurai is nominated for treasurer. Are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer?
I don't want to fight for it.
Any further nominations for the office of treasurer? Are there any further nominations for the office of treasurer? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the officer of treasurer are closed.
I would like to move that we vote by unanimous consent.
I'll second that. Motion by Laura, second by John. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That motion carries. Next up would be Robert's Rules of Orders. The school board chair gets to appoint one of the school board members as the parliamentarian for the year. We will act on a proposal we've to adopt the Robert's Rules as rules of order for the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, except where modified by board policy. I, rather than selecting someone, is anyone interested in being the parliamentarian? It does not mean that you have to be a complete and total expert on Robert's Rules. In fact, when we've had, when we haven't had Josh here, we've pulled out our books and there's cheat sheets and things like that. It's just it's a position that we normally will appoint to someone. So, if anyone has an interest in that, it's getting narrowed down.
Ken.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to appoint Member Lewis as our parliamentarian. Now, do we need to do a?
No, it's an appointment.
A motion and a second on that one, too, then?
It's an appointment.
I'm appointing? Okay. You're appointed. Congratulations. All right, next up is the?
Do we do need a motion?
Do we? To adopt the Robert's Rules, yes. Not for the appointment of that, okay. That's the order, okay.
And it should be there on page nine.
Yeah, it's on the bottom of here, so. Okay, so now what we're talking about is, is we appointed someone to be our parliamentarian. Now, we need to adopt Robert's Rules as our formal rule of order for our meeting, so.
Need a motion for that?
I've got it on page nine for the actual motion. Nope, I'm sorry, it is page eight. Okay.
A motion for that.
So Molly's going to make a motion to adopt Robert's Rules. Looking for a second.
Second. Oh, Natty.
Natty? Okay. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That motion carries. Thank you, Don. Now we can go into the meeting. That's the?
That's on page nine.
Is what? That's for the calendar, great. Yep, so next up, we'll talk about meeting dates and times. The regular meeting and Board of Educate, for the Board of Education have been held on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM. It's recommended that the board set a meeting day and time that is convenient for the members of the board. So, and if you look at the background in your packets, they've, again, second, fourth Tuesday, starting at 7:00 PM, with the exception of December, in which the meeting would be on the second Tuesday. March, in which they would be, in which meeting would be on the fourth Tuesday. July, there would be no meetings. It is recommended that the board set a meeting day and time that is convenient for the members of the board. It is also recommended that no new business be taken up by the school board after 10:45 PM, except by unanimous consent of the board members. There will be the option of adding a work session. Work sessions have been scheduled the third Tuesday of the month at 5:30 PM. School board meetings will be held in the district community room. So, we'll be following similar past meetings. So, we'll start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Second by Holla. Discussion. Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That motion carries. Okay, next up is the appointment of board representatives. Okay, so, this is the, excuse me, this would be the MSBA Legislative Liaison, EXU, Minnesota State High School League, TIES, Northeast Metro, Liaison to City of Columbia Heights, Liaison to City of Fridley, Liaison to City of Hilltop, School Board Policy Subcommittee, Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and the Columbia Heights Business Council. I guess, what we've done previously, we've asked with people what they have an interest in. And we can start with the MSBA Legislative Liaison, and that's one. I think the, that role is, is I know that there's some meetings in the fall.
Delegate Assembly, maybe, I don't know if anybody has served, but the MSBA liaison does, I think, act as a member of the delegate assembly. You have been on that, Laura, haven't you?
Yes. I've been on the delegate assembly. I was not the liaison.
Okay, but it's the liaison with the official MSBA. And they do things, I believe, in the fall when the platform is being put together. And beyond that, I'm not really sure. Do you have anything else to add, Laura, on that one?
No, not really. I think there was one meeting for, I didn't do it, but I remember there was like one meeting in like December, November, somewhere around there.
Member Landwehr just went.
Yeah, Member Landwehr. It was in the fall, and then he would bring back the suggested items to be moved forward for review by administration. So, I think it's just the one.
Yeah.
Anybody have a burning desire for that? No, that wasn't on her list.
She tried to be quiet?
That wasn't on her list.
I try to be quiet a lot.
What's that?
Enjoy it.
Bad jokes. They don't work on the internet, yeah.
I can do the MSBA, since nobody's.
The legislative?
It's a legislative, yeah.
Laura? And EXU. Superintendent Kell, you want to briefly expand on that?
EXU really is, and I think some of you may have served on this, is, it's one of our collaboratives that we do a whole host of things with, but they will send executive committee meeting minutes, but it's only one meeting a year. It's a general meeting. So, although it's an important and vital group for teaching and learning, the principals are gifted and talented students and other things that go on at EXU. Really, as far as a board liaison, it's one general membership meeting a year.
And it's fairly close.
Yeah.
It's not the other side of the world.
Anyone have an interest in that?
I'll do that.
Lauren? Okay. Then we have, next is the Minnesota State High School League. I think Molly, you were on that last year.
Yeah, and I wouldn't mind continuing, but if anyone else has a desire, that's certainly fine by me.
And I've got, Natty can probably speak for herself since she's here, but I have a list of some things she was interested in. And one of them she mentioned was TIES, and then the other was the High School League. So, is there, on the TIES piece, is there anyone else that has an interest in that?
I am interested in TIES as well.
All I'll say on the High School League is, like, one real general membership meeting. I will send you a magazine every month, though, on that. And if all else, there might be a vote. We had a vote this year that we had to do a vote, but usually it's a pretty interesting, but not very participatory, wouldn't you say?
Yep. Natty, is that something you're interested in?
I can do a city liaison role, too. It's, I'm flexible, I'm still learning, too, so. Everything's new to me, so.
Give it to her. Okay. Natty, if you're okay, we'll go with Minnesota State High School League for you.
Okay, thanks.
And then Laura, you, I'm not sorry, Holla, you had expressed an interest in TIES. Is there anybody else that has an interest in that?
I'll just say on TIES that we have a general, either one or two general membership meetings a year that are intended with the superintendent and our director of technology. And then there's also the person that usually is the TIES representative to the board attends the TIES conference in December and enjoys it and reports back on some things that's happening at TIES. That's pretty much it, right, Brian? I got that? Yep.
I wish we could all go to TIES, because the conference is amazing.
Conference is cool.
Yeah, I heard about it.
It's amazing, and there's so much to do. It's like, there's just not enough time.
Okay. Well, if there's no one else that has an interest in that, Holla? Holla will be her representative for TIES. WMEP, we are no longer members.
WMEP on there.
That's my old, that's from last year. I'm just using the cheat sheet from last year. I'm looking at who was there.
I thought we were short one.
Next would be the Northeast Metro, 916. And Laura has been on that previously.
And they are meeting, excuse me, but are they meeting on Wednesdays now? No, they're, actually, that's going to be changing. Oh, okay. Well, yeah, it's, I think it's going to go back. It's going to be Wednesdays, but it'll be the first Wednesday of the month instead of the second Wednesday of the month.
Okay, so it will be Wednesdays, and it'll be the second. That's a change, because sometimes it was on?
Right. Well, yeah, there was, with the new districts that are participating, it was conflicting with their actual board meetings. And they may only hold one board meeting a month, and that was the day.
Interest level on that?
I would love to do it again.
Anyone else? Okay, then Laura's 916.
Thank you.
And we have liaison to the City of Columbia Heights, City of Fridley, and City of Hilltop. The role of a liaison to any of the cities is, there's not an expectation that you attend every meeting and are reporting out to the city on school board stuff. It truly is just that. It's a liaison. You go and introduce yourself, you let them know, hey, if you've got any questions, you know, give me a holler if you're, you have time on an evening that they have a meeting if you want to go and sit in. If you look at their agenda, maybe they're talking about something that, you know, is collaborating with the schools. But other than that, that's, it's not a real time-consuming role as far as a liaison, so, let you know that ahead of time. And is there anyone that would be interested in the liaison for the City of Columbia Heights?
I'd be interested in doing that.
Natty?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. City of Fridley?
I can do that.
Molly? Okay, and if someone's opposed, I'll take the City of Hilltop. Okay. And then the School Board Policy Subcommittee. My preference would be, is that newer members are a part of that, if at all possible. It meets, it's kind of as needed, but it'll be on, it's before work sessions, correct? So, it's the third?
The second, the second.
Before the regular meeting?
Before meeting.
Okay, so it'll be the second Tuesday, and they usually start at 5:00. And it goes in longer streaks of when we have our meetings. There are times when we don't, but there are many or more times that we do, so. I don't know what, I know, Natty, you had expressed an interest in that again.
I said I would do it if there was no other interest. It's, I actually learned a lot doing it, so I think your idea of having newer members do it is actually a really sound idea.
Time constraint wise, Lauren, how would that work for you?
Unfortunately, I have my conflict on Saturday Tuesday.
That early, okay, all right. Molly, I know at one point we had you in there. Are you any better with scheduling or not?
The job has changed so much, it's hard to get committed to getting there.
Holla? Holla, it's Tuesday.
You said it's second Tuesday from 5:00 to 7:00?
It was from 5:00 to 6:00, 6:15, however long it goes. And then the regular meeting starts at 7:00 right after that, so.
Okay, and it's monthly, every month?
Pretty.
Okay. I would like to say that since Vice Chair Palmer's been on the board, that we have gone through all of our policies on a three-year cycle. So, some of them just need to be reviewed, some we don't have to touch at all. So, really, the stress point is when the legislature gets done. And there's lots of things that they might have voted on that we might have to have policy coming from MSBA. Then it gets very, very intense. It doesn't meet usually in the summers, meaning July or August. It might meet in June.
Okay, yeah, if, I mean, if it were every single month, that would be a hard time commitment for me. But if it's not that, I would love to do it. Sounds like really exciting stuff.
The Policy Subcommittee is wonderful. It really is.
Yeah.
Natty, were you saying something?
You're really missing it, Natty.
Really exciting comment. How the adjective I choose, but.
I like policies.
To each their own.
Okay. So, we'll go with Natty and with Holla, and then I'll place myself back on the school board policy for chairing the meetings. And that's our three. And then we're on to the Association of Metropolitan School Board, School Districts, the AMSD. That's a, an organization that represents school districts legislatively. They have some really good speakers that come in. They provide, I think, some very worthwhile information. It's a Friday once a month, and the meeting starts at, realistically starts at about 7:30. I think they have their breakfast thing starts at 7:00, so. So, that's, it's a beneficial organization without a doubt. I did it last year, I don't have a problem doing it again. But if someone else expressed an interest in that, I would yield to that as well, so. But it's a Friday morning, so. an interest in that, I would yield to that as well, so, but it's a Friday morning, so.
I'd actually like to do it again, it's been about five years, unless somebody else is interested.
I think, I just reached a point where I don't have to chase my kids this Friday morning, so, um, I, I get, I get the time commitment part for, you know, that, when it is, so, okay, Laura, that's fine. And then the Business Council, I believe, also meets on?
The same day, it's the same day.
Same day on a Friday, same time, meets at seven, it's generally speaking somewhere in town, um, and it's, it's a good organization for the district, I know that you have administration is there, I've seen Bill and some others there that attends that, so, um, that's a good, um, organization, obviously, to be a part of as well, so, um, does anybody have an interest in that, keeping in mind it's the same Friday morning at the same time?
But it is here in Columbia Heights.
And if not, that's fine, I will take that one, unless there's someone else, again, that has an interest in it, and again, I would be. Maddie, how does seven o'clock on a Friday morning work for you?
I mean, I, I could take a pass on that one.
Okay. Okay, man. Put that in the notes, Dawn, Maddie's taking a pass on the Business Council. Okay. All right, do you have all those done, as far as? Please.
MSBA. MSBA, which liaison, Laura Palmer. ECSU is Lorian Mueller. Minnesota State High School League is Natty Severson. Ties is Holla Samurai. Northeast Metro 916 is Laura Palmer. Liaison to the city of Columbia Heights is Maddie. Liaison to the city of Fridley is Molly. Liaison to the city of Hilltop is John. School Board Policy Subcommittee is Holla, Maddie, and John Larkin. Association of Metropolitan School Districts is Laura Palmer. Columbia Heights Business Council, John Larkin.
Now, before we finalize that, Lauren, I'm going to turn back to you, is there anything that you're seeing that, you know, the liaisons for the cities that you're interested in? I may be happy to give the Hilltop one, if you want to be doing more stuff, I kind of, as I was reading through this, I, I didn't actually turn to see if that'd be something you'd be interested in, I apologize for that, so.
I, I would do that one, but if that's something that you want to do that.
It's, again, I just kind of walked around here, so, um, if you would, Dawn, change the city of Hilltop liaison to Lorian? From me? Yeah, as I was sitting here reading, that was my bad, so I apologize for that. Okay, so that's taken care of. Do we have to do the schools?
You need a motion.
Yep. Okay. All right, based on what the one changed for Lorian for the city of Hilltop liaison, need a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Second by Laura. Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? And motion carries. Do we need to do the schools?
Yes, they are in the next one.
I got it up here. Okay, next would be liaisons to the schools. Now, these are all effective through June 30th, so we need to do July? Correct?
You have, um, one at Valley View was Ted, so we need one for Ted.
Okay, for the, through June 30th?
Mm-hmm, for Valley View.
Okay.
I have Valley View right now.
Why am I, on my sheet, I'm seeing Valley View for Ted?
I see Ted at Valley View as well, for, that's 15 through June 30th, 2016. Columbia Academy is, Columbia Academy is Ted, he's right at the bottom. This one is the one that's the dates that are.
Okay, all right.
I was looking at the one above that as well.
Yeah, I was.
So it would be for Columbia Academy. Yep, got any kids at Columbia Academy? Okay. We're going to go with Lorian Mueller at Columbia Academy, and that's through June 30th. And then? We need to do the June 30th.
The July 1st.
July 1st moving forward, right?
And that's on page 12, filling people in.
I don't see that one, for that date, so it'd be July 1st through, July 1st of 2016.
Seventeen through.
Through, June 30th of 18.
Eighteen.
Okay. So, what we're looking for is the interest level at the different schools for liaisons, starting with the high school. I'd be happy.
I'd be interested in that one, if no one else is.
What's that?
I said I'd be interested in the high school if nobody else is.
Okay. Maddie? Of the high school. Columbia Academy?
I can do that one.
Molly? Highland?
I could do that one.
Holla? North Park? I would grab that one if nobody wants it, or would, I shouldn't put that way. If no one else has a burning desire for that one, I would do North Park. And we have Valley View.
I'll do Valley View.
Lorian?
No, to the Family Center.
Family Center for Laura. Okay. Dawn? Please.
By 1st of 2017 to June 30th, 2018. Columbia Heights High School, Maddie. Columbia Academy, Molly. Highland, Holla. North Park, John. Valley View, Lauren. Lorian, I'm excuse me. Family Center is Laura.
Okay, thank you. And we need to vote on that, so if I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Holla?
Second.
Second by Laura. Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up is the, um, salaries per diem for board members and board officers. In your packet, you'll see what it has been previously since, you know, it's got 2006 forward, it's been the same since 2008, um, so if you're looking for comparison, so currently right now, um, a board member receives $500 per month, $50 per day, up to four hours, this is for per diem payments, $50 for up to four hours, and then $100 in excess of four hours, and a per diem.
And, Mr. Chair, if I might just add, on page 15 of the packet, it shows how Columbia Heights compares to other districts that are affiliated with 916.
Okay, so let's, let's have a motion second, and then let's have a discussion, I don't know if anybody has any questions, if we could start that way, so if we get a motion to move it forward.
So moved.
Laura?
I can.
Second by Molly. Okay, discussion, any questions or comments or concerns about how it previously, how it is currently? I guess my recommendation is that we would just leave it as is, um, unless there's conversation or thoughts on how you would want to do something differently. And if I, this doesn't have the chair number in it, what am I seeing? Am I missing that?
It doesn't have the chair number, the chair.
Four, I don't know. It's. Six hundred.
Chair. It's not, it's not filled in?
The numbers are not. Right. Going to be a motion, okay, Laura, Molly.
So it's 100?
Just said there'd be 100, it'd be 600, so, for chair, correct? Yeah, so, the motion would read, uh, motion by Laura, second by Molly, to set the 2017 salaries for all board members at $500 per month, to establish additional compensation for board officers follows, be, now, does it go at 600 or just the 100 more? $100 per month, and furthermore, that all members of the board may receive per diem payments over their salaries established by the Board of Education for meetings of NSBA, MSBA, mediation sessions, and such other meetings as may be approved by the board, and which take the member away from his or her regular obligations of a regular workday, which are held on a Saturday or Sunday. Said compensation for per diem payment is to be, it's, it was 50 per day for up to four hours, and 100 per day for, in excess of four hours. Discussion? Comments? Maddie? You good over there?
Good.
Okay, and that's just a regular motion, so, all right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That motion carries. Next up would be the designation of depositories. And Bill? Can talk about that.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. In the resolution that I've attached to this item, you see the banks that we use on a regular basis. A couple of these banks we don't use a real lot, but for an example, the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund, that's where all our state funds flow into that account first, and then in order to get it to Northeast Bank, I have to run it through LaSalle Bank, so it's just kind of a process, so that's why LaSalle Bank is listed, and US Bank is listed because our bond payments run through US Bank, so it's just a one-day piece of money flows through. Our main bank, we do, most of our banking is Northeast Bank, that is local here. Our county funds flow to Morgan Stanley until we need them, but, and they're the brokerage firm that's listed. PMA, we don't use a real lot right now, but we have a few dollars in account there yet, so we still need to have that open. So I would just ask that, um, well, I guess I recommend that we would pass the resolution.
Okay, um, this is a resolution, so what I'll do is I'll ask for a motion and a second, and I'll read the resolution, then open it up for discussion, so if I get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura? Looking for a second.
Second.
Lorian? Okay, resolution, resolution designating depositories. Be it resolved that the following be designated as depositories for certain monies of the school district, and as such are authorized and directed to honor and/or pay checks or orders when signed by the treasurer and the clerk for the withdrawal or transfer of funds on deposit in said bank in whatever form. LaSalle National Bank, US Bank, Northeast Bank, Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus, and Wells Fargo. Be it further resolved that the following investment brokers are hereby authorized and directed to honor orders when signed by the treasurer and the clerk for the withdrawal or transfer of funds on deposits in said instructions in whatever form, and Morgan Stanley, and PMA Financial Network. Be it further resolved that in case such deposits in the designated bank shall at any time exceed $250,000, said depository shall immediately furnish bond or securities in lieu of bond according to the law, and the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis, Minnesota, or any other aforementioned depositories are hereby designated as the place for safekeeping for all securities furnished in lieu of such bond. Discussion or questions regarding that?
I have a question.
Yeah?
You had listed the banks that we are currently doing business with, I don't, Wells Fargo's on the list, did you mention?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Wells Fargo is where our, our trust is, is placed at for our post, post-employment benefit for our, for our employees, yeah, there's, there's actually about $5 million in that account.
Thank you.
Okay, good question. Anyone else? Okay, since this is a resolution, we need to have a roll call, for those of you that are new, the clerk, which is Maddie, will read each member's name, and you will respond either in yea as in opposed, or nay as opposed, to opposed, so, um, when I ask the clerk to read the roll, that's the process that we would go through, so, Maddie?
Is there a conventional order to reading the roll?
No, whatever you want, Maddie.
Okay, so if I recall, Member Landwehr, he would just say, Member Samurai? Right? Then she doesn't say hi, just so you know.
Yay.
Hi, yay.
Oh, wait, just kidding. Uh, Member Lewis?
Aye.
Member Mueller?
Aye.
Member Palmer?
Aye.
Member Severson?
Aye.
Member Larkin?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, that was our depositories. So next up is designation of electronic transfer designees, and Bill Stolte?
Yeah, I would like to have two appointees to process electronic transfers. Most of the time, we use Mark Patterson, our district accountant, does that, but in some cases, if he would not be here, or be gone for some reason, I can take that duty. So that's all we need, I don't believe we need any more people than that.
Okay, let's start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Second by Holla. Any questions, discussion, comments?
Just a quick question, so you only need the two designees?
Yeah, what, what we do right now is, Mark, Mark initiates the electronic transfers, he brings them to me, I actually sign off on them, in a case where he would be gone, I would initiate it, and then I would ask the superintendent to sign off on the, on the transfer.
Okay, and that doesn't need to be in this motion?
No, no, because we want to actually have the superintendent initiate the electronic transfer.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Good question. Anyone else? Okay, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, next up would be the designation of legal counsel and contacts. You taking that one, Bill?
Yeah. Um, we use a few different attorneys, and they're very specialized in what they do. You see Karen Kappel listed there of Northeast Metro, she does all our employment law work. Laura Tubbs Booth does a lot of work for our special ed that comes up. Joseph Langle of Radwick, Rosak Maloney, he does our contract work, and then Thomas Deans from Knutson Flynn and Deans, he does anything that we do with elections, so when we're putting questions together to do an election, he's the, he's the attorney we go to to take, take care of that. So I would ask that these four attorneys be our designated attorneys.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly? Questions, comments, discussion?
I do have a question here, um, we, we've got some very specific people to do some very specific items, if we were to need anybody outside, do we need to actually have them as designated counsel, or can we, can that just go through the board, if you needed somebody outside of?
Yeah, if, if, if one of these people would not be available to us, I would, yeah, we would come back to the board and ask for a designation for a new attorney, we would, that's one reason that we listed the, the different, you know, companies. Where like in Joe, in Joe Langle's case, I mean, there definitely are other attorneys in his law firm that could fill in and, and cover what we need from him, and, and it's the same with the Thomas Deans.
And I was going to just say with the special education attorney, Laura Tubbs Booth is the primary, but she does have secondary people that might work on the case.
Okay.
If we have it, so as long as the firms are listed, we're okay.
All right. Never thought to ask that before.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next is the designation of the election clerk, Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair and members, tonight I would like to ask the reappointment of Don Hoyam as the election clerk, as designee, she has been designee since 2007, she's been trained by the county multiple times, and I would say that in the last year and a half, we've had six elections, and so is very experienced besides, so I would beg your leave to reappoint her as designee tonight.
Motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Is that Holla? Second?
Second.
Molly? Questions, discussion, comments? Okay, done good so far.
Yes.
Hearing no discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, congratulations, Don. Next up is designation of official newspaper, and we have Bill and Casey come onto the table.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Every year we must designate a paper to take care of all our, our legal publishing, you see in your packet, we have a letter from the Sun Focus, they are the only paper who gave us a quote on their services, is a paper that we've used for many, many years, and it's definitely a paper that covered the majority of the community members in our community. You look, see, see that the prices are at 75, 650, that's about a 2% increase from the year before. Last year, we spent about $6,000 totally with the paper, but it was a little higher than usual because of the elections we went through and all the notices that we had to publish, when I look back a year, we spent $3,100, so when we look at a 2% increase, we're only looking at about a $63 increase for the year. So my recommendation, of course, is to go with the Sun Focus again for this next calendar year.
Okay, start with the motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Holla? Thank you. Bill, there's certain requirements that the newspaper has to meet in order for us to be able to use them, is that correct?
Yes, they have to, there's a certain criteria that they have to be at in order to be considered a legal paper.
It's by state statute.
Okay.
Yeah, and they, and they, they do qualify as that for us.
They meet everything that we, they meet everything that we need them to, to be our newspaper, though?
Correct.
Okay.
What are those legal things they have to meet?
I don't have it in front of me, but off the top of my head, they have to have a certain percentage of distributed circulation within the school district community, and it's a high percentage, I'm thinking it's about 75 to 80%, so it has to, has to cover the entire, as much as possible of the, of the district, and I know there's a couple, and I apologize.
Well, one other thing they have to do for us is they have to issue affidavits for us, so that we have proof of publication.
Okay, thank you.
And if I recall correctly, really, the, the Sun Focus is really the only paper that even qualifies.
That's true, in our community, they're the only one that qualifies and has the most circulation, so we're covering the majority of our, of our community.
No, I have heard a lot of complaints in the Housat area that they don't receive them, that they don't receive the Sun Focus, or it's really spotty, so, I mean, that's something we might need to address, because that's a big part of.
I have talked to them in the past, they do have a lot of difficulty finding carriers to deliver the paper, as if there are areas of the community, like, right now, where they're not getting it, they are, they do drop off large stacks, like at the public library at City Hall, so people can always go pick them up, but I know they have difficulty finding carriers.
Would it be possible, Bill, to inquire with the paper about the Housat area so they know, either you or Casey?
I can follow up, but I apologize, I didn't hear what, community?
The Housat area.
Housat, okay.
The townhouses and, yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing no further discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Case. Well, I believe that's it. With that being said, we will call this meeting adjourned at 7:57.